All right, the regular meeting is called to order at seven P M. Regular council agenda for November seventeenth was accepted as presented. Somebody like to make the motion? Counselor Shields, all in favor? Motion carries. Get right into our reports and we'll start with Neil, the Chief Administrative Officer reports.
Okay, so in terms of the status report, we don't have any huge changes other than the items that are in process from the last meeting, the traffic bylaw, the communications policy and procedural bylaw. Are there any questions?
Any questions regarding the status report? Not seeing any, we'll go to capital.
So I'm going to do it that way. Largely, we're getting through most of our plan for this year at this point, fortunately. I'm still awaiting the roadway assessment, which has been completed by an engineer. The new membranes, the new membranes were installed the week of November third, and they're making a huge impression and a huge dent in our infiltration troubles. I think the operations manager will have more to report in the near future. The other thing I wanted to mention, it was just a comment. We did the pool liner this this year, which buys us another ten to fifteen years on the useful life of the pool. But I'm just making a little note that encourages council to look into long range planning for replacement outdoor pool within ten to fifteen years in terms of location, conceptual design and fundraising. The nineteen sixty-four vintage pool is in remarkable ongoing condition, and that's to everyone's credit, there's looked after the pool. But its age should not be forgotten. And in recent years, outdoor pool, new outdoor pools of a similar size in places like Vulcan and Fort McLeod have cost in the order of five to six million dollars. So it's a community discussion that seems far away, but I'd encourage some groups to start thinking about that before it's upon us or it's upon the community in a few years' time. And with that cheery. But oh, yes, the something else that I'll be bringing in the near future when we're discussing capital. The highway LED signs are not in great shape. They're starting to show their age, and we forecast that last year. There are some decisions that will need to be taken in the near future regarding those signs. Depending on what council want to do, it's not going to be cheap. And it'll probably involve the 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 public realm reserve to find a solution to that. So that's that's that.
Okay, any questions regarding the capital plan status? Counselor Sopp.
Thank you, worship. Just a question on that storm management. On that last page, I'm sorry if I'm a little bit late. On page five, just scroll up here, just just a little more, right there on storm management. Top of the page, it says complete. So that's the we had the Westview Pond checked over. Were we doing something with that this year?
That's going to be in the proposed capital plan for twenty twenty-six to dredge it. It's very, very shallow at this point in time.
No, I was just wondering if we are doing something in twenty twenty-six as far as budget goes.
Administration will be proposing the project, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Miller.
Under buildings, you, the community center energy upgrades have been listed. And I know we've discussed this several times in the past. And some suggestions that I made received some significant pushback. But I'm going to bring it up again because a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. And I wonder if any of the energy studies that we did actually shows the benefit of upgrading the thermal value of the building from whatever it is to whatever it could be. And is there any payback to get to that hundred thousand dollars back? Hundred thousand dollars in energy could be, I don't know, could be ten years, could be twenty years, could be two years. I'm just not sure. So my question to start with is, did any of the energy studies that we that we entertained, that we had done, did they indicate what the value would be by upgrading from whatever it is to something else? Because that's the question.
No, none of the studies that were done told us that we were going to have to have an additional study done to tell us the payback time to do these upgrades. So I believe the decision was, let's just go ahead with the updates. The pricing for adding insulation to that foundation wall is going to be a lot less than what's budgeted. We're just working with the contractor to determine when that can be done. We don't know if we can still do that this year or if it'll be in the spring.
Okay, so we've had that discussion about insulating the exposed foundation, which makes good sense to me. But even that, I don't know what the cost of that upgrade would be. So it would be interesting, maybe before we just get final push on this to, let's understand what the cost is for construction for that upgrade compared to this budget of a hundred thousand dollars or whatever the revised budget could be. But I just personally, I'm quite concerned about spending a hundred thousand dollars on this old building without understanding whether or not there's any real benefit or even long term payback to that hundred thousand dollars.
Counselor Miller, do you think it would be of value maybe to get an information brief on the community center? And then we can discuss it a little bit more as we're going into capital planning season.
I mean, whatever council thinks is appropriate here, I just.
Well, I just don't want to weigh into the operational aspect of it. I want to focus on the budget aspect of it. So I'm wondering if there would be value of coming back and we can really focus minds and just get an update on the current status.
We're missing numbers. So if we had the, yes, so if we had the cost of construction in front of us along with this budget, then perhaps we can make an educated guess or educated agreement, if you will, about whether or not we spend that money.
Okay, so manageable, Neil? Okay, do we need a resolution as such? Okay, thanks, guys. Counselor Mitchell.
Yeah, we've had this conversation. Like, you, you actually, you mentioned the thermal imaging, stuff like that. You could see where the heat was coming out. So Clayton's saying that if we want actual numbers to justify, it's going to cost us money to get those numbers. So I'm okay, obviously, we're going to need a quote. We're not just going to let everybody know that our budget's a hundred grand and try not to spend it. So but we got to go through the quoting process, right? And to get more than one. So I don't want to stall this because if we, if we start doing this, this definitely is not going to get done this year. If they got to come back with, obviously, the quote you got to come back with, but I don't, I don't want to spend any more money on that.
Yeah, I think that's why we're just seeking an information brief, not an R F D, just an update on the on where things.
You sold me last time, so.
Yeah, no, you're right, Counselor Mitchell. And all I want at this stage, we're not doing any more studies. We're not hiring any more audits. I totally understand that. I agree with that. All I'm trying to do is match up these two numbers. Is it, is it really only fifty grand versus the hundred thousand dollar budget? That's what I want to know.
Okay, that's easy, perfect. Any other questions? Not seeing any. We'll go to your report there, Neil.
So highlights from up to October thirty-first. We had further regional water discussions with the consultant. We had an introductory, I had an introductory meeting, excuse me, with the new L R S D superintendent, Sean Beaton. And we had a couple of additional meetings. If council has any specific items they would like to see on agendas, I say as most meetings, please contact us to discuss. In terms of additional information, bylaws and policies, we've got the revised procedures bylaw, draft new traffic bylaw, revised communications and public participation policies. And we've been working on property tax variance objectives, policy review and amendments. During the consultation period for the traffic bylaw, questions may be asked. And I wanted to note this around whether Nanton requires a dangerous goods regulation or not. This is still being explored by our DEM and it would, it might be, if it is developed, it would likely be a separate bylaw that would require provincial ministerial approval. So we haven't forgotten about that. We are still looking at it. But it would be a separate regulation.
Any questions? Not seeing any, we'll go to Clayton's.
Okay, so there's the accounts payable report for October. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Another busy month, lots of money being spent, obviously, as you can see. In terms of activities, we did a, completed a benefit survey with staff, which provided us some good feedback for potential changes in twenty twenty-six. We've finished the advertising for the franchise fee changes. So next steps will be to send that on to A U C, the Alberta Utilities Commission, and then that, as long as there's no issues, that'll be in effect January first. We received our twenty twenty-six insurance renewal. Unfortunately, there's a pretty large increase coming, so we will discuss that more in budget talks. And then we just working on interim audits. We had our quarterly review with Scotia Wealth. They handle a good portion of our reserve funds. We're starting work on twenty twenty-six capital budget for discussion at committee as a whole next week. And then work for changes over here. We're at sixty percent complete. And we actually just found out today, we're actually ready to go to building permit application. So that's where we're at.
Okay, Counselor Miller.
Sorry, I had another dumb question. I noticed in the drawings, it shows that we're doing a ramp up front for handicap access. And I guess the question goes mostly to our development officer. We're changing the footprint of the building somewhat. So do we need a development, are we going to get saddled with a development permit application for that?
Already done, sir.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, so the good news is, is that handicap access ramps or wheelchair ramps are exempt from setbacks. So they will fall under the building code for meeting specifications that way. But it was a, it wasn't a variance requirement in the development permit application.
Counselor Sopp.
Thank you. I had a question on the payables. Did we skip over it or?
Uh, no, we're just doing them right now.
Oh, no.
It was all part of his report. Maybe we did go a little bit too quick.
Should I ask the question or wait till?
You can ask the question a hundred percent.
I'm just curious on the fifth item, where it's the community design strategies. And I understand we got a grant about the heritage building. But what's the eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars been spent on so far?
Consulting time, we've been engaged with them now since August. So they've been working very, very diligently because we have a very short timeframe to do this project. So yeah, they are very hard at work, lots of billable hours.
And what are they doing though?
Well, so the project is to provide us with a report that will be presented to council at the end of January. It's basically a heritage building inventory project. So they've been investigating potential heritage properties in Nanton. And right now they're working diligently on drafting statements of significance for that.
Yes, the most significant outcome will be a small number of, well, not such a small number of statements of significance that if property owners wish could, could lead to some protections and some opportunities for their buildings. This is hopefully just the first round of that. The town may pursue funding in the future for more. But you need heritage consultants to do that work.
Any other questions? You're good. All right, anything more for Clayton? Not seeing any, we'll move on to operations. Anything you wanted to highlight or Bill wanted to highlight, Neil?
Well, I think anecdotally, I think he acknowledges it in his report a little bit, but he's going till the end of October. We've definitely seen some good progress, as I mentioned earlier, since the new membranes were installed in the early part of this month. We'd like to see the amount of water we're producing go down further. We still think there's quite a degree, there is still a high degree of possible water loss. And that's going to, the work in terms of tracing the sources of that will continue probably for the next few years. I don't have anything huge additional in relation to his report to add. Are there any questions?
Counselor Miller.
Sorry. So this report shows us how much treated water was sent to the town's distribution center. In the past, we've also had information about how much we've been able to bill compared to how much has been sent out. Are those numbers still available?
Yes, we maintain an Excel file with that intermittently circulated. If council wants to see that again, we can send an updated file around, yeah.
Could I see that at the next meeting then, please? Thank you.
Counselor Sopp.
Thank you. Just recently, as they're working on the water line from the school toward Twenty-Sixth Avenue along Twenty-Fourth Street, I believe, they shut the water off, but it didn't affect nobody but the house on the corner. Did they discover a new loop? Did you figure that out yet?
I don't believe they one hundred percent did. And we ran out of budget for this year for this kind of activity. We are going to revisit it next year. Suspicion is that there is more buried infrastructure in the ground in that area that we do not fully understand, and we're going to have to expose it. The early nineteen eighties were not kind to Nanton.
All right, any other questions per Bill's report? Not seeing any, we'll move on to Jordan's.
During the school break, we opened the arena to give the kids some activities. And we hope that what we could provide was of use to some. A B Daly and J T Foster are utilizing the arena for their hockey programs and active living programs. Curling has importantly signed an addendum that we've put forward to the club. And that brings the lounge, with the exception of the bar, under the control of the town, which facilitates greater levels of public use in the curling lounge. Doesn't facilitate greater levels of alcoholic beverage availability, but it does provide seating, which is what I believe a lot of users and stakeholders were looking for. Any additional questions?
To start. Perfect, any questions? Not seeing any, we'll go on to Georgina's report.
There isn't too much I needed to highlight. I think it was a fairly straightforward report. We've got the mountaintop food additions to the food processing plant as one of the issued permits for that time period. We had a, I think, a fairly successful, we're still not finished with the street filming in on the downtown area. So far, so good, I think. I've had some positive feedback actually come back from us that it's, that it's going quite well. So they'll be back in town for December the first. But let's hope that the weather that they want is cooperative.
Any questions for Georgina? Not seeing any, the fire department. Chief Dozeman was unwell tonight, otherwise he would have been here. But is there anything you wanted to highlight there, Neil?
Not beyond what's, what's in the chief's report. We are, I think as time goes on, we're going to have more discussions with council about the aspiration to expand a little bit the size of the fire hall and start working on some plans for that potentially. Beyond that, I don't have anything to add this month.
Any questions? Peace officer report.
Most importantly, I'll note the high level of traffic tickets issued by our peace officer in the last little while. He's been fairly active on the highway, and we hope that that has a safety impact. The R C M P did ask that in the last few weeks that he, he upped the levels of enforcement around the temporary school zone, so that will have an impact as well on warnings and tickets. We're in the time of year where the amount of bylaw enforcement complaints tends to slide a bit. It's always more in the spring and summer. So the traffic focus is pretty, pretty strong right now. But he did note there that he, he did do some joint force operations work with the town of High River. And he's also looking for, looking into whether we could do a joint, some joint assistance with the town of Okahtoks on Friday, but that's not confirmed yet. That's for their, their light up type event.
Any questions? I have to say that at least twice a week, people mention the decoy vehicle and the locals with contempt, but the people traveling through get it and it's appreciated and it always catches them. So I think it's been quite effective.
Yeah, no, and just to underscore the mayor's comment there, that it's not intended to catch locals or encourage locals to slow down. It's for those passing through town who don't know any the wiser.
Yeah, and it certainly has been effective, for sure. Okay, Emergency Management Department.
So we have a few basic emergency management training programs for some of our newer employees going on right now to get them up to at least the two hundred level. There is to be a tabletop exercise in the near future. That was, did we have a confirmed date for that? No, not yet. And we'll be looking for an advisory committee meeting in the near future. I think the DEMS working on dates for that if she hasn't already.
So we'll go on to the council verbal reports. I'll start with myself. Right after the election, we went right into Counselor Strong and Counselor McMaster and I went to a Net and Quality Life Foundation strategic planning session, which was held over two days. And they've, they've got a lot on their plate. And like a lot of organizations struggle with kind of the funding and looking for a lot of different partnership opportunities. And, and I think the report's going to be coming out in February. Maybe I'm making that up, but yeah, there'll be some big conversations with the town here, I imagine, in the next year. Neil and Clayton and myself met with the R C M P regarding the T H R C move and seeing what that will look like for the twenty twenty-six capital budget. Of course, the Remembrance Day ceremony. And then most recently, all seven members of council attended the A B Munis conference last week in Calgary. It was fantastic getting to know all the members of council and what this, we're going to look like as a team. But of course, more importantly, the sessions that we attended and the networking that was done. I actually attended two really good sessions. One was on brownfield lands, and they're really trying to, different unique ways to reclaim these lands. And I'll send that information, and I took lots of notes. I thought you'd be interested, Georgina. And I also took a session on economic development. And the townestrathmore had a really good presentation. And so did the provincial government on different options for funding Ag Dev in Alberta. So that's, that was for me. We'll go on to Counselors Sopp in alphabetical order.
I didn't have no, none of the committees I'm on have met, so went to the Alberta Munis, it was very good, lots of networking. Besides that, my usual tasks of things that I attend. We did go to the land banquet. And I urge everybody to go because it's about being good stewards of the land. That's what that's all about. So that's about it.
Thank you, Counselor Sopp. Counselor McMaster's.
Like Victor, none of my committees have met yet, but also at the A B Munis, and it was really good. And I also did a couple sessions. We did one on the F C S S, which was interesting. I don't think it really gave us a bunch of information to be able to bring back to the net quality of life or anything here, just how much money that they get and how much they, and how much they want. And the difference is substantial. And then we did another one about being uncomfortable in uncomfortable situations or whatever. And it was really good. There was, there was lots of questions and kind of figured out your own personality and how like if you were a challenger or collaborator. And yeah, it was really, it was really interesting. And I was happy to have been able to go and definitely get to know everybody on the board here a little bit more. It was nice.
Thank you, Counselor Miller.
Not in order, but over the last month, after I finished all my campaign stuff, which has nothing to do with council. I did attend a meeting of M P C here a week or so ago. Wasn't necessarily a heavy agenda, but it was certainly an interesting application that we kind of digested and chewed it up and spit it out and came up with a resolution. I think we, we got where we needed to go with it. we got where we needed to go with it. I I did also attend the AB Munis conference. My main takeaway from that was the same same seminar that Mayor Hanley attended. My takeaway was a little different though. The key focus for me was whether or not as a community, we were ready for investment. And my takeaway was, no, we aren't. They focused on three separate elements, that being electricity and land. And there you go. I forgot the third one already.
Water.
Yes, thank you. How could I forget that? But conclusion in my mind was, we're not ready for investment. We don't have any of those three things that they said were important. So that was a great takeaway for me and it's something I hope to bring back to council and have that discussion on an ongoing basis. I also attended the Legacy of the Land banquet in where was that? Fort MacLeod. And it was very well attended. The speaker that night was the guy who was mauled by a grizzly bear. And it was a pretty interesting story. It almost makes me want to stay out of the bush, but he, quite an impressive story that he had to tell about surviving his experience with the grizzly bear. And further to the note about is our community ready for investment? Just today, I read the information about Kayleigh Lot Sales and I won't go into the details, but I want to thank our CEO for sharing that with me because I found it very interesting. The information contained in that report, I think, is something that this council definitely needs to address and we need to have that discussion, which may make our community a little more interesting for investment. I think there's some opportunities there. So if you haven't read that report that Neil shared, I'd encourage you to read that. It was, it was good reading. And that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you, councillor Miller. Councillor Mitchell.
Yes, nobody's met yet. Next week, a couple. But yeah, the AB Munis was good. Sessions I attended, the same as the Brownfield, same. The other one was infrastructure maintenance and city of Lloyd Minster, Minster, Minister Lloyd spoke and it's unfortunate, it's not unfortunate, but it's when you're sitting there from a town of our size and the person, the town that's telling you how they're getting it done is considerably larger. They have a committee of eight. They have three dedicated personnel just for infrastructure. They have a coordinator just for infrastructure maintenance. But what I did get out of it is we do an incredible job with what we have. We are on, we are going down so many correct paths on how we're trying to get that even the little things like today when Neil says, we discovered a valve or we discover, but we're logging it. We're setting future councils up with an inventory and better mapping and everything. We're kind of playing catch up, but it did reassure me that we are going down the right path. Just what was presented. So kudos to administration and what have you. The other thing I did present, the resolution and thanks for posting on Facebook.
Naturally.
Yeah, because my daughter posted it and now I've got hockey dads from Fort Mac going, I support you. So, but it was, it was, it was, it was good. Again, the networking, not to go on it on, but you will find the more of these you go to. Sometimes there's, it almost feels like it's a bait and switch some of the sessions because you get all excited about the session and you go there and you're going, boy, this is not what I thought it was going to be. And you're, you'll see that because you'll see people get up and walk out. And that's just cut and bait. So, but again, it's, it's one of those things, but there are, there's far more good than not quite what you thought. So hang in there and I'm glad everybody did come.
Yeah, no, it's great. Thank you, councillor Mitchell, and thank you again for reading the resolution and yeah, that we got ninety, ninety-two percent support and no, nobody spoke against it. So it was very well received.
Too. So thank you, Neil. So I did bounce off the resolution what I said off Neil. A lot of it was plagiarized from Neil. So, thank you.
But a similar resolution was brought forward by the town of Innesville last year and it was defeated. And Neil worked hard to kind of restructure and capture it in a different way that obviously resonated this year with municipalities. So no, it was good. And councillor Shields.
So I started out this month with Alberta Southwest and that really was just an understanding of how their meetings run, what they are trying to accomplish and what they do as a board, which is really quite exciting to see the economic development side of the MD and the small communities and what potential there is there for us to grow. I did the Legacy of the Land banquet, something I look forward to each year. I've been doing it for a few now. And the speaker this year was very interesting. I took a lot away, not necessarily the attack itself, but the mental health aspect that he had to deal with and the effects of that. And then Alberta Munis, a lot to take in. I'm understanding that they had a record number for registration this year. So that was exciting to see. And need to just, you know, the conversations that were had and to realize that everybody's just your normal person, right? They all get up in the morning and they all go to their jobs and and are passionate about their communities. And I think that was the biggest takeaway I had from that. And then a few more board meetings this month and it's a bit all, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shields. I'm wondering if we should move your mic a little bit, like just down a bit. So then it's pointed more towards you, made up. Councillor Strong.
So I wasn't able to attend the Alberta Southwest Regional, so Erin attended that in my place and I got the emails and all the information on that. So that was great. ORSC, we have the Christmas Social and the meeting on December 4th. So I'm registered for that. So we'll be going down the intermunicipal collaboration framework. I'm not exactly sure exactly what that is and haven't heard anything of it.
You all here.
Okay. And yeah, and I've touched base with all of my liaison groups. I also attended the Alberta Munis convention and I thought it was excellent. I thought it was great for the team building of this group because there were people that I didn't really know all that well, that I know a little bit better and I was glad about that. The sessions that I attended were advocating for small towns and getting comfortable with being uncomfortable. And I'm a challenger, if anybody wants to know.
If we didn't already know.
Just in case it wasn't clear. And what else did I do? Oh. Thriving instead of surviving for towns. And it was, it was interesting. I wouldn't say that I probably got a lot of notes, but there was a lot of good information that kind of resonated and and yeah, we'll be able to take forward. What else? Trying to think. I think that's, that's about it. It was really good and yeah.
Well, thank you councillor Strong. At this point in time, we'll need a motion that all written reports and as recorded on the agenda for November 17th, 2025, be received for information and filing councillors up. All in favor? Motion carries. The councillors all having read the minutes, there being no errors, submissions or corrections. The minutes of the organizational meeting of the council of the town of Nanton held November 3rd, 2025 were accepted as distributed. Who would like to make the motion to accept those minutes? Councillor Strong, all in favor? Motion carries. The councillors all having read the minutes, there being no errors, submissions or corrections. The minutes of the regular meeting of the council of the town of Nanton held November 3rd, 2025 were accepted as distributed. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Miller, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we will go to business arising from the minutes. Request for decision on the communications policy.
The administrative recommendation is that council adopt a revised communications correspondence and social media policy as presented, incorporating a new section 5.9.1, clarifying the town's ability to edit video recordings of council meetings for accessibility, clarity and privacy compliance purposes. If council wishes further discussion, we can of course defer it to a future meeting.
If you recall, we discussed kind of the points and the highlights from it at the last meeting, made some recommendations. So now it's come back to us with those recommendations. Is there any other questions, thoughts or considerations after reading this policy? I'm not seeing any, so I will require a motion to approve the communications correspondence and social media policy as presented. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Mitchell, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Kind of went broke there. I didn't really read the full resolution, but I think we got the gist. Request for decision on the draft bylaw for the procedural bylaw, Neil?
Recommendation is that council give first reading to bylaw number 141825, the town of Nanton procedural bylaw, being a bylaw to regulate the proceedings of council and council committees. It's a modernized procedural bylaw that aligns with current legislation reflecting best practices at this time. Of course, once we have some new regulations which may come in the new year at some point, we may have to make further changes. But this brings us into compliance.
All right. Does anyone have questions regarding the procedural bylaw that's in front of us today? Okay, we, without having any questions, we can go through all three readings this evening. And if everyone's good with that, move to read town of Nanton bylaw 141825, a bylaw to regulate the proceedings of council and council committees for a first time. Councillor Sopp, do you have a question?
Why is, why are we doing the first reading when the second one is, we have to pass the bylaw to amend it prior to first reading? Shouldn't we be doing that first, number two?
If there's, if we see an amendment, right?
If there was an amendment to the bylaw that's presented this evening, we would have made that amendment and then
I didn't read it that way, maybe.
All right. So move to read town of Nanton bylaw 141825, a bylaw to regulate the proceedings of council and council committees for a first time. Councillors off would like to do first reading, all in favor? Motion carries. Move to read town of Nanton bylaw 141825 for a second time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor McMasters, all in favor? Motion carries. Unanimous consent to read town of Nanton bylaw 141825 for a third time was granted by council present. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Miller, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move to read town of Nanton bylaw 141825 for a third and final time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Shields, all in favor? Motion carries. All right. Thanks, guys. Okay, we'll go on to new and unfinished business. The request for decision on property tax variance objectives policy, Neil.
So this is definitely, this is really an introduction to this tonight. Council, I would imagine, will choose to perhaps wait for committee of the whole for a bit more discussion around this. We have two recommendations that it's adopted, has presented or referred to committee. The purpose of this policy, this policy is that outlines council's objectives and direction with respect to the specific property tax varying mechanisms contained in the non-residential tax incentive bylaw 2024 and the property assessment subclass bylaw from 2024 for ease of annual review and public transparency. It's simply that there is an element within that bylaw where you have a varying power that you can change by resolution annually. And it's that time of year where you make decisions whether to change it or not change it. So council needs to reset or reaffirm certain tax rate adjustments. The policy document spells out the objectives, the rationales and adjustments involved without having to go much deeper. It's becoming increasingly important to look at this every year as more municipalities progressively adopt fairly different non-residential and residential tax varying mechanisms within the municipal government acts capabilities. So right now, you have the vacant non-residential property subclass set at 125%. You have the small business property subclass set at 100%, so there's no discount at the moment to eligible properties. And the multi-unit dwelling property subclass, which was introduced last year, is currently set at zero. So there's no discount at present. And just for discussion, I have suggested 150% for the vacant non-residential subclass, 90% for the small business property subclass and 50% for the, for the multi-unit dwelling subclass. We are foreseeing one or more properties becoming eligible for the punitive vacant non-residential property into subclass in 2026. So that's why there's a recommendation that that rate be increased further in order to make the fiscal consequences for long-term VNR, as I put it in my report, sufficient to bring a property owner to the table to discuss their future plans. That is, if that is still a priority for council. It's really important, if you want to be clear, if you want to discuss specific potentially impacted properties, that should take place in a closed meeting under section 19 of the Access to Information Act, because it could be harmful to business interests. We have proposed a change to small business property subclass as we've already noted that statutory declaration completion rates fall if there is no confirmed financial benefit to the property owner. It does not offer a direct benefit to tenant businesses. If, again, if this is not a council concern at all at this time, we can leave it at zero until such time as the stimulus associated with that power is deemed to be needed or desirable. It's just that we won't compile a very good list of, list of eligible businesses because they won't complete the statutory declarations. We also propose activating the multi-unit dwelling property subclass discount as a way of marketing the incentive to prospective developers in the eligible part of Nanton, which may also assist with generating developer interest in the remaining phases of Westview. The financial risk is presently minimal as the incentive only becomes available to a property at completion or occupancy. So you'd be far, far away from it ever hitting the books. But if we have the percentage activated, we can at least market that benefit. So deferring adoption of subclass rates until February or March will likely impact how many property owners complete the 2026 declarations. And those have to be in our hands by January 31st every year according to the bylaw. So it's encouraged that this be done soon if changes are desired. But you can take your time with this and I'd imagine you want some time to further discuss this and think about it and look at the bylaw and so on.
And Neil and I chatted about this. We felt it was good to kind of ease you guys into this as we start to get into budget season. It is a little bit, um, it's a bit to kind of wrap your head around it. It's taken us a lot of years to to get there, um, but we thought it was important to introduce it um early on. And as Neil said, um, the earlier we get it out to our our property owners, the the better chance that they submit their declarations and everything's done in a timely manner. But the nuts and bolts of it truly are to encourage um vacant properties to be occupied and no longer vacant. So many years ago, six years, five years ago, we developed a bylaw that essentially we could put a punitive tax on a vacant property, um, which hopefully would encourage them to do something with it. There's a lot of parameters around it that defines it as vacant. Um, but ultimately, it's up to council every year to determine what that rate would be. And so i- in past years, it all depends on, you know, the economy, different, different situations. But last year was one hundred and twenty five percent. Um, equally, we wanted to offer an incentive to people that do have occupied businesses. That's where the small business property um incentive comes in. And typically, it's about a ten percent discount that we offer. And we try to balance that out with the punitive tax, um, so that it kind of pays for that incentive offset. But we thought there should be um more of a reward if you're actually operating your building um or your property. And then recently, last year, as Neil said, um, we wanted to encourage um developers to build more residential or rental properties in our town. And so we introduced this multi-unit dwelling property, and that's where we um would offer an incentive to that developer. So that's kind of the the council perspective on it, but we'll open it up for questions again. If we're not ready to make a decision tonight, that's totally fine. We can continue the conversation next week at committee of the whole as well. Councillor Miller, do you want to start us off?
Thanks. The multi-unit dwelling property, I just heard you say um rental property, but does it also apply to multi-unit condo-type property? Where there would be more than one dwelling in a building that's purchased and not, not for rent?
The the bylaw is presently focused on rental.
Okay, then I think we need to make that very clear, because here it's not, that this is.
But the bylaw would be, this is just, this is just the summary of the bylaw?
I understand that. I just, when we get to that point, though, I think it needs to be clear because I sure didn't see that it was for rental only, but thank you.
Uh, councillor Sop?
Thank you, your worship. Just so I understand that second one. So any of the property meeting, uh, you're not, are you talking vacant land or buildings here?
Completed buildings.
So do we not give them a discount already? In our taxes?
Uh.
That they they file and we give them a discount and?
No, um, there's an incentive if, a separate incentive if they were to um substantially renovate their building or add an addition or a new construction. There's a separate tax incentive to encourage improvements on the building. But this is separate. This is for an operating occupied business um or building, I should say, that would get a small discount. In the last couple of years, we haven't offered any discount, but the recommendation from administration is a ten percent discount this year.
Just the whole trouble about the discount to the business, yes.
To the property, not the business.
Pardon me?
To the property, not, not the business.
Right. But the the property owner, we're offering a discount to get the more business onto that property? At whose expense? The, the, who's picking up that ten percent is your housing side? So part of that is also the property owner doesn't even live in town. So they get the benefit, but it's the ratepayers of the homes that are paying for it. That's the problem I I have trouble with.
And I think the intention is, um, and this is why we've had it at zero percent the last few years, is that the intention is that the vacant punitive tax would would pay for that ten percent for the occupied buildings. So the ideal scenario, and it might not always balance out, um, Clayton's shaking his head, but hopefully it's it's close that um, that it is the vacant property tax that is offsetting that.
And as far as I know, it hasn't balanced out once, though.
Neil, would you like to speak to that?
I I I think the best thing we can do is take, at committee of the whole, is take council through that bylaw. Um, the the two bylaws actually, just to maybe provide a bit of a detailed explanation as to how how those are laid out. Um, council has the choice to leave that at one hundred percent, basically no discount, and and rely on the non-residential uh, the non-residential tax, tax incentive instead uh for construction, which is a a very different, um, a very different objective. Uh, the objectives around the small business property subclass is more about having, about rewarding businesses, properties that have occupation by a business, by the owner or by a tenant uh with it, with a number of employees. Um, it it's a fairly different objective that is quite limited in terms of how we can, we can tweak it because it's a provincial, provincially defined um property subclass to a degree. Um, but it really is up to council, and that's why it's being introduced tonight. The further discussion will probably be required because it's not a, these aren't e- they're not easily explained quickly, but you are going to have to decide if you're going to stay put or or change in the next couple of months. Yeah.
Thank you, Neil, I appreciate that. Um. And yeah, I know in the past, we've, we've had those numbers that kind of just give us a bit of a glimpse on how that could balance out. So if we can just have a rough idea of then even what that could look like at committee of the whole, that would be great. Do we have any other initial questions for this? I'm not seeing any, but so I'll need a motion move that the chief administrative officer bring the property tax variance objectives policy to the November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five committee of the whole meeting for further discussion. Could I have a motion? Councillor Strong, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, um, item five point two, request for decision on the bylaw fourteen thirteen twenty five, the school enhancement committee, um, by, you know, or Clayton, I suppose?
So um, administration is requesting council pass second and third reading for this bylaw. Uh, the, the October sixth council meeting, it was presented and first reading was passed. After the meeting, administration prepared the required public notice of advertising for the bylaw and has had it posted on the website ever since. As per the M G A, the notice was published for a minimum of two consecutive weeks. Uh, and as per the M G A electors, were advised, they may petition for a vote on the bylaw within fifteen days after the two-week period. No such petition has been received, and so administration is bringing the bylaw back to council for second and third reading.
Okay, does anyone have any questions around this bylaw? Councillor Mitchell?
Yeah, so I mean, the numbers that we've got in here, that's, but that number's going to change. So as they fundraise. So that number, what we will be, I don't, I don't like to use the word on the hook, but we're responsible for, will drop. Does that have to, I know it says up to that amount. Um, but after a year, like if, is it worth revisiting and lowering that? Or will it not have any effect at all?
I guess we, we could, um, I don't know if we.
So if it's not needed, I'd, it's just, it's kind of a, it's an update for us to see exactly where we're at. And I guess we'll get that reports from, from the enhancement committee too, so we'll have an idea where we're, where we're going to be sitting, so.
Yeah, like in, in two years' time, the committee might have all of it, or they might have half of it, and they might come to the town and say, we need to cover this.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we can certainly provide updates.
Yeah, it, twofold it, it, as you get closer to a goal, people get excited to see that goal. So it may aid in in fundraising for the, for the committee. And it lets us have an idea that we backed the winning horse, kind of like. So, um, yeah, if we could ask them to kind of give us a pretty good update, I think they're going to anyway, but I don't think they'd make it official.
Is that something we would need to make official, or we just understand that they'll be presenting on a regular basis annually to see if we need to adjust the amount?
That's the best approach.
All right, any other questions around this bylaw? I'm not seeing any, so we'll go into um move to read the Town of Nanton bylaw one four one three for a second time. Who would like to make that motion? Uh, councillor McMaster's, all in favor? Motion carries. Move to read Town of Nanton bylaw one four one three two five for a third and final time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Mitchell, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, uh, request for decision draft bylaws one four one five two five, one four one six two five and one four one seven two five, the development authorities. Let's just clean things up.
That's precisely it. Um, we just need to do a little bit of housekeeping on um three important bylaws that establish a development authority and a subdivision authority for the Town of Nanton. Um, under the M G A, these are under council's purview to do this by bylaw. So we've got uh a complete repeal and replace of the development authority bylaw as well as land use bylaw amendment, or pardon me, as two bylaw amendments, one for the designated officers bylaw, and then another for the land use bylaw. And these are corrections, just to refer to the proper section of the M G A.
All right, anyone have any questions before we get started on this? Not seeing any, um, we've got a lot of resolutions coming forward, so everyone will have to participate. A move to read bylaw one four one five two five, a bylaw to establish the subdivision and development authority for the Town of Nanton for the first time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Miller, all in favor? Motion carries. Move to read Town of Nanton bylaw one four one five two five for a second time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Strong, all in favor? Motion carries. Unanimous consent to read Town of Nanton bylaw one four one five two five for a third time was granted by all of council present. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor McMaster's, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Approved third and final reading for the Town of Nanton bylaw one four one five. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Shields, all in favor? Motion carries. Move to appoint the Town of Nanton position of planning and development officer as development officer in accordance with section three six of the Town of Nanton subdivision development authority bylaw one four one five two five, and any amendments to that bylaw. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Mitchell, all in favor? Motion carries. Moving on to bylaw one four one six two five, resolutions to amend designated officers bylaw. Move to read bylaw one four one six two five, a bylaw to amend the designated officers bylaw for the Town of Nanton for the first time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Sop? It's your turn. Councillor Sop, all in favor? Motion carries. Move to read Town of Nanton bylaw one four one six two five for a second time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Shields, all in favor? Motion carries. Unanimous consent to read Town of Nanton bylaw one four one six two five for a third time was granted by all of council present. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Miller, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Approved the third and final reading of the Town of Nanton bylaw one four one six two five. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Strong, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, bylaw one four one seven, resolution to amend the land use bylaw one three eight nine two four. Uh, move to read bylaw one four one seven two five, a bylaw to establish a subdivision development authority for the Town of Nanton for the first time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor McMaster's, all in favor? Motion carries. Move to read Town of Nanton bylaw one four one seven two five for a second time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Sop, all in favor? Motion carries. Unanimous consent to read the Town of Nanton bylaw one four one seven two five for a third time was granted by all of council present. Who would like to make that motion? Uh, councillor Miller, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously and approved the third and final reading for the Town of Nanton bylaw one four one seven two five. Councillor Mitchell, all in favor? Motion carries. We did it. All right, uh, Clayton, the information brief two thousand and twenty six for the operating and capital budget.
Right. So just uh, just to provide council with a little bit of a timeline for the two thousand and twenty six operating and capital budget process. So per the M G A, um, each council must adopt an operating and capital budget budget each calendar year. Um, and it's also now a requirement that each council have a three-year operating plan and a five-year capital plan in place, in addition to the current year budget. So the current practice has been to approve the capital budget for the upcoming year in the fall. For the operating budget, current practice has been to adopt an interim budget for the fall, in the fall for the upcoming year. Um, approval of the capital budget in the fall obviously is important because a lot of the capital purchases and projects is, projects require tendering and pre-planning in order for the projects to be completed on time. Um, the operating budget could also be passed in the fall, but as there is almost always a need for amendments in the spring, um, administration has asked that the current year budget be utilized as interim budget until the new year, until the new budget is passed. So the proposed timeline, um, next week at committee of the whole will bring capital budget for you for discussion. And then we'll bring back uh an R F D at one of the December meetings or both. Um, the operating budget can also be discussed at the committee of the whole with a request to pass the current two thousand and twenty five operating budget as interim. So once we do that, uh, we'll take the two thousand and twenty six operating budget that's already within our three-year plan and has our base, and we'll start to work on that for council consideration. That process usually starts in February and finishes in March, sometimes in April, so we've got time. Uh, the capital budget is the big one, and so that'll be the biggest discussion next week. Um, yeah.
All right, thank you, Clayton. Um, yeah, we just, we've got a lot coming up over the next um couple of months, but ultimately, um, the final budget being improved in end of March, early April. So I thought it would be advantageous to have a bit of a timeline so you can know what to anticipate over the next few months before we get the ball rolling next week. Does anyone have any questions? Not seeing any, we'll just move right on and we'll move on to item five point five, the library board appointment. Neil?
So the uh recommendation here is that council rescind the appointment made by uh resolution number two ten twenty five eleven oh three to the Nanton Thelma Fanning Memorial Library Board and appoint an alternate member of council in accordance with eligibility requirements set out by the library board. We inadvertently ran into a bit of a conflict situation. It was no one's fault, and uh we need to select a different member of council.
Well, perfect. We have a different member of council all lined up, and that would be councillor Mitchell. Thank you. Well, perfect, we have a different member of council all lined up and that would be councillor Mitchell, thank you. Who's been on that board for many years. Um, so at this point in time, we'll have one resolution, um, that we will rescind, um, resolution number, did you want to read this out?
My council moved to rescind resolution number two, ten, dash, twenty-five, eleven, oh, three and appoint, um, the new member of council.
So we'll appoint councillor Mitchell in accordance with the eligibility requirements set out by the library board. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Zop? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, the next thing we have is, um, some correspondence. We have, um, a package from the Old Man Watershed Council, uh, requesting contributions from the Town of Nanton. In years past, um, we, we used to contribute, um, to the Old Man Watershed, but I think we stopped that about three years ago, did you say? Um, they will be coming as a delegation, um, to the first meeting in December, but we wanted to put this in front of you guys now so you have a bit of context before they come, um, with their ask on the first meeting of December. So that's why that is there for today. We don't need to make a decision tonight on that request. Um, and then the next thing we got was a congratulatory letter from the Minister of Municipal Affairs. So with that, we'll need a motion to move into closed session at nine, ten, um, pursuant to section one, nine, seven, two of the Municipal Government Act, RSA two thousand, chapter M two, six and the Access to Information Act, ATIA, as follows. Item seven point one, the Westview laws, ATIA, section two, nine, advice from officials and item seven point two, municipal buildings, ATIA, section two, six, disclosure harmful to intergovernmental relations, who would like to make that motion, go into closed? Anyone? Councillor McMaster's, all in favor? The motion carries.